Good morning and welcome to Athens City Council. It's 8:00 AM on Thursday, June 15, 2023. This morning, we're in special session. And our first item of business being to establish the quorum. And we do have six of our seven council members here. Since this is a special session, it's a little bit different format. And it's even have as an added public hearing. So during a special session, we are gathered for a specific purpose. This morning, it's to work on pieces of legislation that would enable new community authority to be established for the development and redevelopment of the ridges. And so what we'll be doing is having an ordinance for second reading for the purchase agreement of some city-owned acreage that is near our South Side Park and also adjacent to the ridges property. After that, we'll make a motion to recess to enter into a public hearing. We'll receive some public comment. And then we will reconvene for the reading of the additional two pieces of legislation necessary to move the new community authority forward. So I will proceed with the ordinance for second reading. This is 7023. This is an ordinance authorizing a purchase agreement with the Ridges Community Development, LLC, or its nominee, the Ridges New Community Authority, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by all members of council. And as we are needing to move this piece of legislation forward, and it's on its second reading, what we will need to do is have a motion to suspend. And then we will have, if council moves forward with that, then a motion to approve. The purchase agreement was discussed at its first reading Monday night. And does detail with maps and then also written information on the exact pieces of property that will be purchased. And these do, it's approximately 6.3 acres and then 1.8 acres of the 19 acres owned by the city. So if council members would be willing, we could have a motion to suspend.
So moved, second.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. And now we could have a motion to approve. And then we will open it up for any discussion or questions.
So moved, second.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of 7023. Are there any comments or questions from, first from council members? Councilmember Swank?
Just one quick question. Under Roman numeral one, consideration, the purchase price for the property shall be at the option of the city at the time of closing and consist of either, and there are some options laid out. How do we define city there? Would this be a council action?
I'll address that because I did consider that yesterday. I was taking a look again at the real estate purchase agreement. And I believe this will have to come back to council. There are going to be lot splits involved. And this will have to be, will have to come back to council for authorization for the mayor to actually sign the deed conveying the property. So at that time, since this will be the consideration for that actual sale, then it's my belief, it's my opinion, that council would make the determination based on the mayor's recommendation as to which of these options the city council at that point on the mayor's recommendation would exercise.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council members? Questions or comments from administration, other elected officials? Any questions or comments from our audience? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. I now entertain a motion to recess.
So moved, second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? I didn't think. All right. Well, now enter the public hearing portion.
Excuse me. I think at this point, we need to sign the actual purchase agreement.
We do. Thank you.
All right.
Would you like, I think that we published, sign the ordinance to first. So he signed.
Here, 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 here. Please keep pressing.
I think the way this is set up that you sign, I'll print underneath.
Are you too? I've never noticed that. It's a sinister thought. I wish. It's good we're in our right mind.
But you can't sign.
I'd just say this like this.
Actually, I was supposed to be standing in my dad's room. Up to my right hand when I was a little kid.
I know.
Yeah, the nuns tried doing that today and I did not.
You signed as Joseph.
Yeah. Smacking me through the.
Silly. But turn the page. No, not that. Turn where you were at. Back to where. The blank of the.
Yeah.
He didn't commit. Should they switch places?
Mike and I were talking about that. Yes.
That's all right.
Yeah. Ruler. All over Facebook.
Yeah.
First time I've ever seen that.
Scary conservator.
Careful. Trust these.
Yeah. Earl. Mike and I were talking about it for a half hour last night.
Sign it and print your name and then I'll face. Okay. Want to go to the meeting? Are you going to go to the meeting?
Which meeting?
This meeting.
Not until July.
Well, never.
No.
June 21st.
No, that's, that's, that's wrong.
Go for it.
That's the library doesn't meet in June. At their January meeting, they decided not to meet in June. Person has inaccurate information.
Well, that's fine if you should.
One more step.
Terry Smith corrected that on Facebook.
You signed it as Steve Patterson.
I did.
I tried Stephen once with you and you didn't like it.
Only my mother when I was in trouble. So I took off the alias.
Now, after this week, I've been to the.
So thank you for staying with us during that brief beginning to the recess where we needed to sign the purchase agreement and have it notarized. Now we will enter into the public hearing. And that is to consider the amended petition to create the New Ridges Community Authority District to be governed by the Ridges New Community Authority. And I do believe that we have someone who's interested in joining us, Mary, if you'd like to. If you could give us your name and address and then proceed.
Good morning, Madam President and members of council. I'm Mary Abel, 48 Strathmore Boulevard. I'm really somewhat amazed to be here at this public hearing regarding the ridges on a date which is 33 years and one day since the Ohio House of Representatives voted to approve legislation transferring the land and buildings on the hill, which is the ridges, from the Ohio Department of Mental Health to Ohio University and to the city of Athens. I realize that the legislation before city council on the current ridges development project does not seem too controversial and rather mundane. But I can tell you that prior to introduction of that state legislation, that certainly was not the case. And behind every piece of legislation, there's a story. And since this is a public hearing, I hope you will indulge me and let me find some personal insight and history as to how this came about as I was personally involved in the discussions as a state representative. I went back to my personal archives and other sources just to jog my memory a little bit about the conversations, both public and private, that transpired during the time of this land transfer. The first transfer actually happened in 1988. And that's when the Department of Mental Health transferred about 670 acres to Ohio University. This was basically because all the psychiatric hospitals in Ohio were going to be closed. We were going to come under a state mental health act. And Ohio was moving to a community-based mental health model. So the burning question in the mind of everybody in Athens and in the county at that particular time, what was going to happen to the hospital buildings and to that surrounding piece of land? For many people in Athens and in the county, this was a very emotional, hot-button issue. First of all, the state hospital was the largest employer in the county. Many people were going to lose their jobs. And this was going to cause an economic hardship for many families. Secondly, there were many serious concerns about what was going to happen to the patients who were there in the hospital. Were they simply going to be turned out into the community? Where were they going to be housed? What was going to happen in terms of staffing? And there were all kinds of conversations that were generated around that, as you might imagine. Third, the idea and the consternation that the buildings on the hospital grounds might be destroyed ignited voices of great passion within this city and county on both sides of the issue. Would the buildings be destroyed or would they be saved? Announcement of the hospital closure initiated the formation of a group that opposed the demolition of any and all buildings on that particular site. As you can imagine, there was a myriad of recommendations as to what should happen over there and how that should be utilized. Some citizens thought that the city of Athens should become the owners of that property. But that was really not a feasible option. And those of us involved knew that because the city did not have the financial resources to undertake that responsibility. And everyone knew that the rehab of those buildings and the restoration was going to take a substantial amount of dollars. And that fact has not changed. Many residents, both county and city officials, felt that the best alternative, myself included, was entrusting the site to Ohio University because we thought they could be the best stewards of this land. And we'd already had some exploratory conversations in that direction. With the university being a state entity, it could develop a comprehensive plan for that land. It could have the ability to financially sustain it and could possibly seek other sources. Well, opponents were very angry about this. They countered that the university had no concerns about historic preservation. There was a fear that the buildings would just totally be razed. And some advocates had suggested that. And also, the opponents of this plan blatantly said that the university would never be transparent in their planning. And they would not be open to any public participation. Well, as you might imagine, in many of those discussions and meetings, there were some very bitter and acrimonious debate that transpired and conversations. And I have to say that many times I was on the receiving end of that. But, you know, that was my job. After all the debate and public discussions, I worked in concert with Mayor Sarah Hendricka, university representatives and personnel from the Ohio Department of Mental Health to officially begin a land transfer process. And this would be really the second land transfer piece. On May 15, 1990, I introduced legislation to transfer tracts of land among the Ohio Department of Mental Health, Ohio University, and the city of Athens. Part of that legislation included Athens City receiving the acreage that was the South Side Park and some additional acreage there adjacent to the park. And at that time, Mayor Sarah Hendricka, she was very adamant that the city received that property in order to expand the Parks and Recreation Program, which was very important, and also to ensure that this city could provide for an extension of the bike path along the Hocking River. And up until that time, South Side Park really had been on the mental health leased land there. Mayor Hendricka also believed that the park could continue to foster a relationship between the community and the university due to the close proximity of both. In addition, the legislation directed that 24 acres of land be transferred from Ohio University to the Department of Mental Health. That was in order to construct a new mental health hospital just west of O'Blennis. And as you know, that structure is still there today as the Appalachian Behavioral Care Facility. Also included in the legislation was a provision for an advisory committee that included local representatives, thus allowing participation in discussions regarding the property of the ridges. Well, in the beginning, there were several committee meetings, but those ceased after a few meetings. In later years, there was an amendment that was tacked on to a state budget bill, changing the composition of the committee so that it would be more optional and more at the discretion of the university. But around 19, or I'm sorry, around 2013, the advisory committee was resurrected with a composition of members that differed really from the original committee. On June 14, 1990, the Ohio House of Representatives voted to approve the land swap with a vote of 94 to 0. And it was then sent to the Senate for approval. On January 4, 1991, Governor Richard Celeste signed my bill into law. And Ohio University then became the owner of all the former mental health center lands and the buildings. In March of 1993, the Athens Mental Health Center officially closed. And patients were transferred to the new mental health center, which at that time was the first public inpatient hospital to be built in Ohio within that last 20 years. In 1999, the ridges was annexed into the city of Athens. And that's someone else's story to tell. I've read the report submitted by the Ridges Community Development Authority. I think the plans and the proposed amendment and recommendation, or I'm sorry, the proposed development recommendations offer an opportunity to revitalize an important part of Athens' history. It can also enrich the quality of life in our city and county. And I personally would like to see that reconnection of community involvement and the partnerships as opportunities arise. I sincerely hope that adequate funding can be obtained to further this project in order to enhance those structures, those that can be refurbished and maintained so that we can see and appreciate the vibrancy and the preservation of our historical structures. John Dunn, an English poet, once wrote, "Ask not for whom the bell tolls, it tolls for thee." Now, that may not be the best analogy that I could use. But I fear that if we do not put forth our efforts and work both individually and collectively to see the culmination of this project, it really could mean the death knell of many of those buildings. And I think that would be a tragedy. My only hope is that it will not take 30-plus years to achieve that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And thanks for sharing with us all that historic information. And I thank you after the fact, perhaps, on your role in making this. So we're here today to be able to even consider it. And I have a favor to ask, if it's possible, if you typed your notes, if we could have those included, because I think that's a really important history and we'd like to attach them to the minutes of this meeting. So that'd be great. Are there other persons in the audience who might want to speak about the ridges? Yes, come on up. If you can give us your name and address and if you're representing a group.
I'm not representing a group. Red Paisol, 27 Smith Street. So I think this is a really great idea in terms of like working to revitalize ridges. I had a question about how the new community authority will work in terms of like incorporating, you know, the plan as it's set and also figuring out the details in terms of like what the, what the structures will be, what the businesses will be, and how that will incorporate community feedback and input.
Thank you. The, and I will give a brief explanation of what I understand about the new community authority and the process under which it's going to work. So there, you will notice later on, when you see the agenda on the screen, that we also have a one-reading resolution for appointments of some boards of trustees, for board members, excuse me, for the new community authority. And so those persons will be meeting periodically. Those meetings will always be announced to the public and the agenda published. So that's a possibility for people to participate in that way. The members, the information on who is serving on that board is a part of this resolution this morning. And so you will have an awareness as, and I know that Nicole from The Messenger, our editor, has been very good about publishing the information from the newspaper about what's happening next and who the people are that are involved in it. And so that new community authority will be the ones making decisions about that. But I think that due to the nature of how this whole process has worked in the past few months, that it would be in collaboration with city council members, with boards and commissions. We have a Historic Preservation Commission. And so that we would want their input on what we're doing. The new community authority is also, has built into it some conservation agreements. And so they have worked with other representatives of the land lab and the cemetery associations. And so that kind of relationship is not, is not going to go away, nor are the conservation easements to protect the land. And then as we work also then to protect the buildings and revitalize them. And I might add, Andy, you've served on the ridges advisory committee. Other comments you might want to add or, and/or Joe Recchi or Dominic, if you want to add some things to that?
Certainly. Thank you, President Isley. I'll start and then turn it over to Mr. Recchi. I think the other, you know, thing that's important with regard to deciding what uses will go into the existing buildings. It really is a bottoms-up function of people who express interest of going into the existing building. So, you know, I would ask interested members of the business community, interested members of the public who have interest in locating a business or a particular type of housing or perhaps even living in the housing that's going to develop to come forward to the new community authority, Board of Trustees, and say those plans or those desires. Because really, it ends up being a bottoms-up approach. You know, the artist live-work facilities are a perfect example. You know, hey, I would like to be there. I would like to put my studio there and I would like to live there. I have a restaurant idea. I would like to be in this space. And so that's something that, you know, the Board of the New Community Authority, will absolutely solicit and constantly be on the lookout in concert with probably the Economic Development Council here in the, in the city to make sure that the, there's an interest. And then there's, there's a vibrancy there because that vibrancy is what's going to drive our ability as a new community authority to revitalize those buildings. So it's not like there's a, you know, like some, some plan in the offing that nobody knows about that says this is how we're going to do all these things. It really is a matter of interest. A lot of it has to do with if we can get people there. So the, if we can get people there, that will drive the vibrancy and allow for the redevelopment of these buildings.
Thanks.
I would only add to that.
Come on, come on up just so that it can be recorded on the microphone and the other people.
Thank you. I think that was a great description of it because it is an organic process. But I would only add to it that it's in the city of Athens. So all of the regular governance tools, the zoning, the planning, historic preservation, all still are in effect. So any ideas for the reuse of a property will be subject to rezoning, subject to variances if needed, the planning process. So this is more of a governance overlay that allows it to go forward, but in no way substitutes for the, the natural controls that are already in place in the city of Athens.
Good. So I'll make one last call. If there are any other comments or questions from our audience members? If not, then we'll have a motion to recess. Or excuse me, we don't need the motion. Yes, we do need the motion to reconvene. So our public hearing is over at 8:26 AM. And now we need a motion to reconvene this special session.
So moved, seconded.
Okay. We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So we have two other pieces of legislation that we need to pass this morning. One is an ordinance for first reading, and that's 7723. And it's got a long title to it. So this is an ordinance approving the amendment of the petition to create the Ridges New Community Authority. Finding the creation of the Ridges New Community Authority, a new community authority pursuant to Chapter 349 of the Ohio Revised Code, will be conducive to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare and is intended to result in the development of a new community, declaring the authority to be organized in a body politic and corporate, defining the boundary of the authority's new community district, providing the method of selecting that authority's Board of Trustees, fixing the surety for those trustees' bonds, authorizing related matters, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by all members of council. And in this case, as is similar to our previous ordinance, in order to pass this today, we need to have a motion to suspend the rules before we have a motion to approve. And so if I could have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved, seconded.
All those in favor of suspending? And the reason for suspending the rules is that we are moving this together in concert with the OU Board of Trustees meeting that's happening today and also being able to accomplish this today before council goes into July recess. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. And now if I could have a motion to approve?
So moved, seconded.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for the approval of the petition. The petition was first viewed by council members, addressed to the petition in end of May. And then we get, again, went through the review of Mr. Ritchie and Bricker and Eckler Law Firm, and then also our law director and our clerk of counsel here. And so I want to thank all of those people who have moved this petition forward to make sure we, we have things in, and what we think is the proper order to accomplish this. And I'd ask if there are any questions or comments from council members? And I'd ask if there are any questions or comments from council members first. Any questions or comments from other elected officials, administration or our audience members? If not, we'll take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Our last item of business before agending, uh, excuse me, adjourning, is a one reading resolution. And this is the resolution to appoint the members of that board that we were just talking about a moment ago. So this is resolution 723. This is an emergency resolution, appointing the members of the board of trustees of the Ridge's new community authority and is introduced by all members of council. If I could have a motion for approval?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. Thank you. And is there any discussion or are there any questions? Yes, council member Swank.
The last meeting, uh, Mr. Recchi mentioned that down the road, this, uh, board of trustees would evolve into an HOA. Several questions related to that. Number one, and I know this is trying to predict the future, timeline, Mr. Recchi, for when that might happen. Does that happen when we possibly build those first townhouses out on Dairy Lane? Or does the project have to be complete? Or is it somewhere in between where that HOA would be formed?
So, um, the, it's not an actual HOA, but it operates like one because you have an election and you have trustees. The, um, the way it's designed, the new community authority will at some point issue, uh, bonds or take on debt in order to do infrastructure. When that debt is retired, uh, there's an election of, uh, citizens. So it's, it actually is a fairly long-term, uh, in the future that it would turn into an elected process. But it is, under Ohio law, that is the way it's designed. So ultimately, it will operate something like a large HOA with, uh, citizens that are elected in, in a, a kind of a association.
So when that debt is retired and that organization is formed, under what rules will they operate? Will they establish the rules and guidelines or will it carry over from what's initially set up by this first governing board of trustees?
So like a, uh, like an HOA or a condominium association, it'll, it'll start with governance rules and that's how we will operate the new community authority. At, at, they can inherit those rules, they can change those rules, um, over time. So th- those citizens would have the opportunity for, to evolve into the purposes. The primary purpose of the new community authority right now is to lift the site off. Once infrastructure is improved, people are living there, improvements and people own property, the, the interest of the new community authority could change into more like a civic association. So the big, I, I would say the heavy lifting is at the front end of it because that's when all the, the, uh, most difficult work has to be done.
So if you were, and this will be the last question, if you were to, to, um, not roll the dice, but rub your crystal ball and, uh, as to when that debt might be retired, five, 15, 25?
It's 20, 20 years plus.
Okay.
So for, for a fair amount of time, the new community authority is, is operating with the trustees, the way that the Ohio law structures it with citizens, select, citizen selection.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Council member Reisner.
Are the members of the, excuse me, this board, uh, anybody compensated?
No. Uh, this is a volunteer.
Okay.
Council member McCary.
If the term lengths for the trustees were to change, would it be, who would make that, uh, change? Right now I'm seeing one or two-year terms and I'm wondering if for some reason it was decided that the terms should be longer. Would it be city council or some other entity that would make that change?
I see the law director saying maybe not.
It's, uh, firm and the Ohio Revised Code is to the terms. And also to, uh, member Swank's, uh, comment or question, the ordinance we just passed, um, adopting or approving the amendment, section 12 does, uh, state that there's no election to be held for successor members until such, such times as the bonds issued by the board of trustees of the authority are outstanding. So it does set, set forth that in the, um, ordinance.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Mayor Patterson.
For Mr. Recchi, um, you know, let's say it's 20-year bonds, you know, it's like the fire station headquarters right now that we put out. Um, and so at that point it retires. Well, could a business owner be a part of that board because it's going to be mixed use at the end of the day, where we're going to see retail as well as residential and other things?
So you bring up an interesting point because, uh, the plan would be to have mixed use on the historic campus, but the historic campus itself will be a condominium association, so there would be association members, so there's another level of governance and control. So they would likely be participating in the governance of the condominium association and perhaps be officers of that because, uh, in addition to the overall site, there is the common operation of the historic buildings. So there, there are plenty of points of input from, um, from participants, even, and that, that could happen next year. I mean, it's not in the distant future, it's in the short-term future.
Any other questions or comments from our council members, elected officials, administration or our audience? Being none, let's have the vote then for the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and this resolution is approved. And now if we could have a motion for adjourning.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. None. We are adjourned at 8:36 a.m. Thank you, everyone.